City of Dania Beach, regular city commission. This is our regular meeting. It's Tuesday, June 27th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. City Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Salvino?
Here.
City Attorney Bootsis?
Here.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Yavacorum?
All right, thank you very much. If everybody could please stand, I mean, hold on one second. Jump the gun. Everybody, please take a moment and bow your heads for a moment of silence. Okay, now if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today for item 3.1, we have a presentation, and this is in recognition to Olson Middle School Principal Valerie Harris for her 13 years of service. And this is sponsored by Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I know I always speak for my colleagues, but today I know I can speak for all of us when we all say we wanted to have something very, very special to be able to honor you after 13 years at Olson Middle School. We are beyond, beyond grateful for your leadership and how much you have poured into your students, how much you have poured into this community. You know, I go for so many things to your school. We have made gardens, we have, oh my goodness, we have done so many great, great things together. And those students, I've never seen, I've been a teacher for over 20 years, and I understand there's principals out there who stay behind their offices, they don't come out, they don't know the kids, they're not, they're not interactive with their students. But you are one, every time you come out, the kids know your name, they know who you are. You are part of the fabric of this community, and you have made such a great, great difference in all of their lives, bringing busloads and busloads of kids who are beach cleanups. We cannot thank you enough because you understand the value of service, and that is really instilling what you invest in those kids that will carry them on. And I'm really sad, really sad, because I know what it means for kids to see somebody who truly cares about them on a daily basis, where it's authentic, it's real, and they will have the memories that you have given them for the rest of their lives. So with that, I know my colleagues will want to speak and have an opportunity to celebrate you, but we do have some gifts, some parting gifts for you. We have something that you can remember our relationship by, and we just want to thank you. I did have the opportunity to meet the new principal today. Thank you for giving us a tour and doing a handoff, and it does give me some comfort that she was a vice principal at Olson before. But at the end of the day, the mark that you have made, the difference you have made in those students will live forever. So thank you so much for all you have done for Olson Middle School and the city of Dania Beach. And I know we want to have some thing to give to her from the commission, but if anybody else from the commission would like to speak and just give some tribute, let's, I know you guys love her as much as I do.
Commissioner James?
Yes, good evening. It is a sad but joyous occasion because now you get to share the beauty that you are with another school, with another community, with another environment, and sometimes that is necessary in our paths and in our walks of life. And so Mrs. Rulock was my teacher when I was at Olson, and now she's going to be the principal. And I know that there are very huge shoes to fill. Representation matters, who you are matters. You allow so much of our youth to dream and to know that anything is possible, and you're not afraid to roll up your sleeves and get in the mud and get dirty with everyone else. And that's the type of leadership that we need, the type of leadership that nothing is above them. So if you see trash on the floor, to pick that trash up, empowering your staff, and to be able to promote from within or promote from someone who's already been there and have taught there shows great leadership qualities in who you are and how much of a visionary you've been and what you've been able to pour into all of our students and our youth that are here in Dania Beach. And so I've already told you, like, don't forget about me when you get to your new school. Service has no boundaries. Any time that you need me, if you need anything from, I speak for myself, for myself to come and speak to the kids or be a part of, whatever programs that you're having, I am willing and able and available to do that because 13 years is a long time to give any job, you know, but to definitely serve it at the level that you've been able to serve it at is inspiring for me, is inspiring for all of us, definitely inspiring for all these people that showed up for you, to celebrate you. And so from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for your service, and I know your service is not yet done, but thank you for the service to our community in Dania Beach.
Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you very much. On the golden sands of Florida by the ocean blue stands the home of the Olson Vikings that we love so true. They still have that alma mater going there?
Yeah.
There is more to it. That's what it was when I was at Olson Middle School back in the day. Carrying off a little bit of what Commissioner Davis said, you know, I reached out, I came to the reach program and some of the programs that we extended out from other people. You did a lot for the school, and I'm very thankful that you were there. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to miss you, you know that. You've always been so welcoming and so much part of this community, and I know you're going to do wonderful things at the next school. And as Commissioner James said, we're all here for you. You know, if you need us, we're here. You've been a big part of Dania Beach, not just Olson Middle School, but Dania Beach. And you've always come here with so much energy and got all of us going and out of our seats, and really, not just with the kids, but with the adults as well. And it's just, it's a huge thing, it's a talent, that's an absolute skill that you have that I don't see very, nobody sees very often, it's very rare. So the next school is very lucky to have you. We were, yes, they are, yes. And we were blessed to have you here for as long as we did. And please, you know, thank you for everything you did and keep doing, and take care of our kids, and we're here for you if you need us. Thank you.
Principal Harris, I'll be brief. You know how they say first impressions are everything? And the first time I met you, you were very welcoming, you were full of energy. It was OJ McDuffie Day, and it was actually my first proclamation as mayor, and that was quite a day. And owning a house actually down the block for the last eight years from Olson, I've seen the positive impact that you've had on that school from the outside, you know, looking at the school. And then when I actually got to go inside and engage with your students, it really opened my eyes to the work that you and your staff have done at the school. So thank you for your service, selfless service, and good luck on your future endeavors. And we also have a proclamation for you, which is going to be read by Commissioner Davis.
Well, it's a certificate of recognition, and so it reads, "Presented, certificate of recognition presented to Principal Valerie Harris for her exceptional dedication and outstanding leadership as principal of Awesome Olson Middle School. Her unwavering commitment to going above and beyond has created a nurturing and inspiring environment, shaping the future of countless students. Here's to you, Principal Harris." There we go. It says, "Thank you for your partnership, exceptional leadership, and unconditional commitment to Awesome Olson Middle School.
Prom, prom shot, prom shot. Put the croissage, put the croissage. Prom shot.
First, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, everyone in the room, Mr. Brown, who comes whenever we call, our phenomenal PSO that supports our school, my family, my family, the awesome family. It has just been a blessing to serve. I don't ask where or why, but wherever I'm placed, I just serve. So I'm so thankful to have been able to serve you, to serve our wonderful children. Their potential is limitless. They are in great, great hands. And every time they walk in this forum, they walk out like, wow, I got to talk to the mayor, the vice mayor, the commissioners. Thank you for being involved in the school from day one, being able to say, oh, that was Mayor James or Commissioner James, she played professional basketball, I know her, she came and spoke to me. Commissioner Davis, you came and planted plants with the children side by side. If our children can see it, they can be it. So I'm not leaving, because all I do is just pass the baton on and we just continue it going. But thank you again for allowing me to serve our beautiful city.
Okay, now for a little bit of business. Move on to item 3.2. This is an update from Broward MPO, and this is sponsored by our Vice Mayor Lori Lawellin.
Good evening, everyone. So everybody hears about the Broward MPO, we mention it here on occasion, and I'm actually the board member liaison for the commission to the Broward MPO, and I'm only there once a month, but there are people that are there every day working really hard and dealing with transportation issues and traffic and all kinds of infrastructure things. And I wanted to bring somebody from the MPO directly to actually give us all an update because he can answer questions better than I can since he's there every day. And I know I've been talking to the manager about some traffic and transit and transportation things lately, so I thought this would be a good time to bring him forward and talk about all the good things that have been happening. And I brought here Brian Koleka, who is Director of Transportation, correct? Yes. Come on up, Brian.
All right, and I have a presentation?
Yep. With IT?
Where I have also, just in case you didn't get it, I got the thumb drive.
Ralph, you got it, right?
Yeah. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. It's an honor to be here. My name is Brian Koleka, and I'm the Director of Transportation for the Broward MPO. And basically, you know, I used to sit on the dais at one point for many, many years, and I understand we don't like long presentations, so mine's only five slides. And basically, it's what our organization is doing to help enhance the lives of the residents of Dania Beach. So we have received several federal grants that we applied for in this last cycle, and luckily, those grants will have a direct impact on the quality of life for your residents. That's okay. I'll talk about the first one. The first grant that we received was the Safe Streets for All, and how that's going to enhance the residents' lives is we have embraced Vision Zero, which means we want no fatalities, we want no serious injuries on the roadways, whether it's a pedestrian, it's a car strike, all modes of transportation should be safe. So it's a planning grant. What we're going to look at is all of the neighborhoods, oh, okay, all of the neighborhoods, and we're going to look at the crash data, the accident data, fatality data, and look at ways that we can improve it in the future. And because it's a US DOT, United States Department of Transportation grant, one of the focuses of the Biden administration is actually to focus on safety and in particular, in what they call equality neighborhoods, which are sometimes underserved communities. So that will be the focus of our planning efforts in Dania Beach for that grant, that is for countywide. The second grant that we have received is a rail safety grant, and it's about $19 million. And it's going to focus on all of the interactions between rail lines and cars going over the rail lines. We have a few intersections in Dania Beach that we're going to make infrastructure improvements for, so we can reduce any fatalities that occur. Each of those improvements cost around a quarter million dollars apiece. So even though the grant is to us, it actually goes right into the capital, we don't keep anything for ourselves or anything, we just look at improving all of those rail crossings in your community. Off the top of my head, I think there were three, so at a quarter million dollars apiece, that's a nice chunk of money. And then finally, we got another grant that is countywide. We are just the name on the grant, but it's basically to look at reconnecting communities and making sure that no community is not connected with another community because they built a barrier, they built a road, or they built something that inhibits travel or isolates a community. So those are the three main grants that we are going to be focusing on for the next couple of years, about 24 months. So you may receive some phone calls from some of your residents that say, er, this rail crossing is getting an extra gate, and they're going to put in like a center median, so that way people can't go over it and in between where the two gates go to add safety because sometimes they get into a rush, they think they can beat the train. But when it's running 80 miles per hour, you can't, it goes a lot faster. It's like a kid doesn't know that a car can't stop immediately, it takes time to stop. It's the same idea. And the Federal Rail Administration has been threatening to blow the horns again, and I don't think any of us want to hear horns 24 hours a day going down the railroad tracks next to homes, disturbing our communities. So sorry the presentation wasn't up, but I am going to leave you with my business card, so if you have any questions or something comes up in the middle of the night and you say, hey, I have a question about this, I remain available at your service.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I wanted to ask Brian, I have your card.
Thank you.
But I know that some, one of the things that we keep hearing when we go to the board meetings are the accolades that the Broward MPO specifically has been getting, because there's MPOs all over the country, and the Broward MPO has received quite a few recently with all the work that's being done, which is impressive considering the other ones that are out there that are much larger and have a lot more resources. So I don't know if you want to mention a couple of the things that, I don't know if you have that information with you or not, but...
Well, one of the things is before the US Department of Transportation actually had an equity map, we developed one on our own, and it was used as like the starting point for identifying what an equity community is. And so now, as of this year, they have a equity map on US DOT's website, but our website was what actually inspired them to do it for their own. And in order to be eligible for certain grants, you have to have an equity area included in that grant.
We already do, so that's all. I don't know if anybody had any questions for Brian? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Great presentation. Brief and to the point. Up next, we have the Building Safety Inspection Program, item 3.3. This is a community development item. Hi, Eleanor.
Thank you.
Hold on, let me activate you. Okay. Okay.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Wait, give it a second for the presentation. I'm just going to give a brief update of the Broward County Board of Rules and Appeals Building Safety Inspection Program, previously known as the 40-Year Certification Program. See, they provided some updates to the program? All right. Just use this? Which one are you, that? Thank you. All right, sorry about that, guys. So briefly, I'll talk about the program. It's a program that requires structural and electrical inspection reports to be submitted to the building official, and it was for properties 40 years or older, 3,500 square feet or larger for buildings. It's also exempt single-family homes, duplex, townhomes, and structures obviously less than 3,500 square feet. This report also has to be submitted every 10 years after that. BORA provides us a list, and the city notifies the residents for the compliance of the report. So the updated to the program is they've taken it from 40 years to 25 years. It still has to be renewed every 10 years, but the program pretty much stays the same. There's an update to the report. We have those reports on our city's website for your reference and for property owners to utilize, but also on Broward County's website, it's there also. So in response to surface building collapses, this is what the Broward County Board of Rules and Appeals has decided, the 25-year threshold. So what that means for the city is we're going to get a larger list than we normally get because there's a larger window of age of structures. So we have received a list from BORA. It is about over 200 structures in the city. 35 of those buildings are condo, residential large condo units, similar to like Meadowbrook-sized homes. And so that totals about 1,000 residential units within that list of 35 structures. So we will, in the next two weeks, be sending out those notifications. What the city is going to do, the program requires compliance within 90 days, so the property owners have to submit the report to the city building official within 90 days. If that report indicates that there's repairs required, they have an additional 180 days to complete those repairs and submit a new report to the city. What we're doing is we're going to notify the property owners via regular mail, certified mail, and also have staff post the properties so they are fully aware that they aren't required to participate in this program this year. We also will send reminder notices every 30 days. So the 30 days, we'll send another notice. If we haven't heard from that property owner, we'll send another notice, 60 days, and also send staff out to communicate with the association presidents and the contact information we have. So yeah, that's our game plan. We're hoping to have 100% compliance within the safety program. It is a large task that we're taking on, but I think it's reasonable, something we can do. And we encourage property owners, if they have questions about it, to contact the building official directly. He can help them, guide them about their specific property. He's very familiar with every property on the list. We've been going over it in the past week, and we will continue before we send notices out. And that's about it. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Yes, Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you, Eleanor. I know that you said that those that are not in compliance are going to go to the special magistrate. Is it a scale of severity of issues that may cause it to be deemed, you know, unsafe? And how does that look and how does that work? Because I see 60 days and then 100 days, but what happens if there is what staff feels is a life safety issue, like are we still giving them 100 days?
No, if the building official sees a report or finds a property that is deemed unsafe, he will red-tag that property immediately and require evacuation of the property.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Eleanor.
That's it, thank you.
Item 3.4 is a special event request from RV Sales of Broward to host Dania at Planet RV. It's beginning Friday, June 30th, 2023 through Sunday, December 31st, 2023. It's held at 2051 Griffin Road. This is a community development item.
I can't believe I'm here. It's been a long time, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, my wonderful Eve over there, and City Manager. I have long overdue, but anyway. So I'd love to bring Dania after dark during Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and bring over to Planet RV over in Griffin Road. We're very private, we have a little peninsula there all by ourself, on the water, and I'd just love to bring fun. You know, I see it, live it, and I love it here. And I'm so, so happy to be part of this community. The community is amazing, just listening to the school and the principal, and I love how everyone is engaged and gets along, and I love it. So I'm so happy to be part of this community, and I hope that you guys welcome my special events permit. That's why I'm here.
Say your name, ma'am.
Gigi Statler.
Gigi Statler?
Yes.
And address?
2051 Griffin Road.
All right.
Dania Beach.
Perfect. Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you do, so we see it here, but why don't you tell the public what you...
Of course. So we are a recreational vehicle dealership, and we're selling a lifestyle. And it's become more than the normal, like RVs are part of life now, and we're reaching out to families and, you know, communities and stuff. So what we're trying to do is bring more people to the dealership by way of events and food trucks and fun and fair and shop the RVs and, you know, bring more people to the lifestyle. And it's been becoming a way of life, of travel and stuff. So it's kind of a, and we have such a beautiful space, and it's more space than I need for just the RV dealership. So that's why, you know, we have this nice little spot on the water that we wanted to have these events. And it's a new way for me to introduce customers, you know, those people to RV lifestyle.
So what you're going to do is you're going to have host events out there that's going to intrigue the people to come out, outdoor activities, travel around, see what's available, and to be able to give them, I guess most of that stuff will be, it's free entry, but they have to pay for the food trucks, and you'll supply entertainment of some type at no charge to the community. Is that correct?
Exactly, yeah. We're looking for just, you know, basically fun stuff, karaoke night and things like that.
Trying to bring a little outdoor activity to the people to show what RVs are about a little bit as well.
Because the RVs are outdoor lifestyles, so, and our property is all outdoors, so, which is, you know, since COVID, everybody is wanting to do outdoor stuff, so that's why we want to promote that.
And how often did you want to do that? Tell the public how often you want to do that?
We're going to do Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays.
Every week?
Yes.
Okay, because now that will conflict with some of our events as well. You realize that, right?
I would never want to conflict with your events. I'm sure we can share the people, or we could figure that out, and I'm hoping that some of your events would move to our place because we would love to host, we'd love to host Dania After Dark, come up with a new, whatever you guys want to do. We want to be your, we want to be your space.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Yes, Gigi, it's been a very long road, but I'm happy to bring this to our city. I think it'd be great. I think everything has its own different audience. And so if we don't have any other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 3.4.
All right, I have a second from Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Oh my God, I can't believe it. I'm so excited. Welcome, family. Oh, I'm so excited. Thank you, everybody.
Yay, congrats.
We look forward to it.
Awesome, awesome.
You have no idea. Thank you so much.
All right, Gigi.
I also have a request for a same-day approval for a presentation. This is item 3.5 for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. This is sponsored by Commissioner Davis. Do I have...
Make a motion to approve item 3.5.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner James, seconded by Vice Mayor Llewellyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Asked unanimously. All right, now we'll move on to item 4.1, which is a proclamation for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. And this is sponsored by Commissioner Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, I had the opportunity to attend a corporate leaders luncheon with the Alzheimer's Association, so this comes directly from them, and I really wanted to be able to recognize this month. So thank you so much for you guys passing this proclamation. All right. Whereas the health and safety of all Floridians is important to the happiness, prosperity, and well-being of our states, families, communities, and economy. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive brain disease that slowly deteriorates brain cells, affecting one's reasoning skills and abilities to perform simple tasks, ultimately leading to memory loss. And whereas Alzheimer's cases in Florida are expected to increase 24% from 580,000 in 2020 to more than 720,000 in 2025. And whereas 806,000 Floridians provided over 1.2 million, 2,067,000 hours of unpaid care for individuals with Alzheimer's disease. And whereas Alzheimer's disease, which currently has no cure, is the sixth-leading cause of death in adults aged 18 or older in the United States. Whereas no currently definitive interventions to prevent Alzheimer's, essentially public health services of early detection, risk deduction, and surveillance are necessary to protect and improve the health of our citizens. And whereas the month of June, citizens across Florida take part in the longest day to raise awareness and support research for Alzheimer's. And whereas further research for Alzheimer's is critical as it is the only cause of death among the top 10 causes in the United States that currently cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed. Whereas nearly 50% of individuals with increased memory problems reported that they had not discussed their symptoms with a healthcare provider, yet early and documented diagnosis, when coupled with access to care planning services, leads to better outcomes for individuals with Alzheimer's. And whereas their caregivers, and whereas their caregivers and members of their family are crucial in maintaining a healthy quality of life for those battling Alzheimer's. And whereas changing the trajectory of Alzheimer's disease requires public health tools, techniques that help alter the course of heart disease, cancer, HIV, and AIDS in our state, encouraging healthy behaviors to reduce risk of co-occurring conditions, decreasing the number of people with undiagnosed dementia, improving medical management of dementia, and assisting family caregivers with getting help to sustain their vital role. And whereas it is imperative that Floridians with Alzheimer's receive diagnosis and have access to quality, affordable care, that further research in the research of this disease continues. Now, therefore, as the, on behalf of the City of Dania Beach, our Mayor, A.J. Ryan IV, do hereby claim June 2023 as Alzheimer's Brain Awareness, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in the City of Dania Beach, Florida, and call this observance and attention to our citizens. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now move on to citizen comments. We have one citizen comment. Mrs. Grenette? You got a nice event coming up, huh?
I do.
All right.
Joanna Grenette, 450 Southeast 7th Street, number 251. I'm going to use all my three minutes today, and I'm going to make the most of it since I'm the only one here to do citizens' comments. We do have an amazing event coming up on July 1st. This is the Historical Society and the Dania Beach Lions Club have teamed together, and we will be recording residents' oral history. And we hope that everyone who can make it can make it because we really want to hear all the stories that make up the fabric of Dania Beach, and we hope to immortalize them and also use them for future generations and archive them. So again, it's July this Saturday, July 1st, 11 to 3 at Dania Beach, no, yeah, Dania Beach Lions Club.
Mrs. Grenette, if people can't make this, is it possible to like, you know, maybe schedule another time, or they could reach out to you if they want?
Absolutely. Yeah, you can contact, this is just a pilot. It's an ongoing event. It's the first one we're going to do. Hopefully, it's a success, but we will be doing an ongoing event so everyone can have a chance to talk. If anyone doesn't feel like going and they want more private interview, then that's fine. They can contact us, and we'll meet wherever, however they want to do it, really.
Commissioner James?
Yes, some years ago, I can't remember when, and I think it was with the CRA when we received that grant for those plaques outside, the walking thing outside. They did something very similar to this. Do you have access to that?
I have the video. I have the video of it.
Of, no, they did interviews of all of our residents that came out. I think they did them at different parks. Maybe you can get with the CRA to see who was in charge of that because a lot, some of the people who did that are no longer with us, and I think that would be extra special to put in your archives.
No, I will, I definitely find out who it is.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. And we also attended, the Dania Beach Historical Society also attended the Juneteenth. Unfortunately, it was washed out, but we did attend, and we had fun holding down the tent and getting absolutely soaked. And the only reason we left was because we had to protect the photos. But we do hope to be invited back next year, so, but thank you.
Uh-oh, hold on. Commissioner Davis?
Oh, I just want to say, I think it's an absolutely fabulous idea to record the oral history, especially as we come upon our 120th anniversary. I know it's a pilot, and it's something that you're going to continue. It just came to me now, because I would have asked you on the phone if I had known, but just wondering if there's a way that you plan to compile that and to be able to allow the public to be able to see, you know, some of the stories of the oral history? Have you thought about any kind, marketing's not the right word, but being able to share the history with the citizens of Dania Beach? Have you gotten that far in your process, or...
Yeah, I mean, I know what you're talking about. I think what we, our goal is, is we will have that available for, as a membership also for the future, and also that you can access through the sort of software system that we can purchase, that people will have access to anywhere in the world, and they can access it and listen to everything that we've archived, and we upload it up, and everyone, anyone can access. But that's what we're having an idea of.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah. Actually, it's funny you say, you just reminded me, there's a time capsule out there. I don't know if everyone knows. And it's when, I don't know, next year, we're going to pull it up? Or bury a new one, or do a new one? I don't know.
Pull it up, what's in there?
Yeah, what's in there? I think it's like 1950 for the, yeah, for the, for this, you know...
I like it.
120, yeah.
Yes, I'd say that would definitely bring a little more interest. Pull something up from 1950s.
Exactly.
And, you know, on a side note, Mrs. Grenette, thank you for all your work on the Historical Society. From us not even having a Historical Society for a long period of time to, you know, getting one started with the Commission. You guys made leaps and bounds, and it's actually great to see. And you're very involved, and I think the community's getting more involved and more interested also. And even when you have the picture set up at the Art and Seafood Festival, it was great to see the engagement. It's a shame it didn't happen at Juneteenth because of the weather, but you guys will definitely have more opportunities.
No, it's a pleasure. We really enjoy it, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Here you go. Okay, public safety reports. First up, we have our new captain, Captain Jason Turala.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager. We had a busy couple of weeks, so I'm going to highlight a couple of things that we did. To start with, we had a very good burglary arrest, 1500 South Federal Highway. A FedEx driver was attacked. They had a road rage incident, and the FedEx driver stopped. Gentleman got out of his car, he attacked the FedEx driver, began beating him up while he was inside of his vehicle. He actually dragged him outside of the FedEx truck, continued to beat him up. Upon arrival, with our deputies, we were able to place the individual in custody who committed the battery, and he was charged with burglary battery. Um, and the FedEx driver, uh, luckily wasn't injured, so that was a good arrest. Um, we had a very good arrest off of 2580 Southwest 32nd Court on the west side. Um, a, in, two individuals were attempting to steal a vehicle after breaking into it, a witness observed it, and when they saw the witness, they fled the area. A description of the vehicle was given, our deputies were able to locate the fleeing vehicle, they watched it from a distance, they were able to tactically, uh, watch it, and once they were safely able to detain the vehicle, um, they were able to get a, they were able to get it boxed in, and they were able to get the driver and the passenger in custody, and both the driver and passenger were charged with grand theft auto, burglary, and- We had another burglary arrest at 825 East Dania Beach Boulevard at the Motel 6, a cleaning lady went inside one of the rooms to clean, and upon entering the room, a subject was inside who broke in. Upon her entering, he saw her, he attacked her. Um, after attacking her, he fled the area. Um, we were unable to catch him at that moment, but due to fantastic detective work of our detectives who had nothing to go on at the beginning, they were able to track down the individual, they identified him, she positively identified him, our detectives and our CSC team tracked down the individual, and a couple of days ago, we were able to find him, locate him, and he was placed in custody for occupied burglary battery. So it was a fantastic job by our detectives. We received numerous traffic complaints, um, over the last couple of weeks on Southeast 5th Avenue between Sheridan and Dania Beach Boulevard, as well as Griffin from Federal Highway all the way out to Southwest 35th Avenue. So I reached out to our regional traffic unit, um, as well as our traffic unit within the city, and I wanted to give you some stats on what we were able to accomplish. Um, obviously, when we do these enforcement activities, you know, we write tickets. Um, I always like to educate people, but when we continue to get a lot of complaints, at some point, education can only go so far, so at that point, we gotta start writing tickets. So, in the span of this operation, our, with the assistance of the outside motor units, we wrote 104 citations, 59 moving citations, 45 non-moving citations, and the vast majority of those tickets were all done within the targeted area. Our motorman continued to work, uh, the area of Southeast 5th Avenue from Thursday, Friday, and today, and yesterday, and so far, he's up to 15 citations. So, what I've asked our regional traffic unit to come back into our city, so they're going to come back, give me another date, and they're going to target the area on Federal Highway between the tunnel down to First Street, and then we'll target these same areas again, and I expect to have the same results again, if not more. So, uh, we'll have good results on the traffic, and hopefully, that's a lot of tickets, hopefully people will get the message we're out there and slow down. Um, and if not, we'll continue these operations. June, uh, today, uh, Eric and Terran went out to a camp, uh, all four camps in the city, and they brought the BSO motors with them, so the kids got to get on the motorcycle, get out and see the motorcycle and ride them, uh, they let them go on and hit the gas and everything, so the kids always like that. Um, July 8th, there's a really nice event going on, Eric and Terran put it together, who, everyone knows Eric and Terran, they're fantastic. Um, they're sponsoring 25 students from Olson Middle School, and they're working with Tiger Tail Recreational Park for the day, it's going to be a day of team building with BSO and the kids, and they're going to be able to engage with the BSO deputies, they're going to be able to do the water activities, we're going to have lots of resources out there from BSO, we'll have, uh, our SWAT team out there, our K-9 unit, the motors again, and we'll let the kids come out and play with all the toys, and we'll be out there with them, and we'll be watching them in the water, and it'll be nice for the kids to, to hang out with us for the day, so it'll be a nice event, and that's on July 8th. On July 11th, uh, Eric and Terran, again, they're going to bring the BSO drone unit out to the next group of four camps, and they're going to let the kids actually fly the drones, so that'll be cool, we'll let the kids mess around with the drones, I know they'll enjoy that. So that'd be a good time for the kids. And then, of course, July 15th, we have the recruiting event, which is the big event we got going on with the city manager and the commission, I know a lot's going into that, so we're excited about that, we, we should have a really good turnout. So, that's all I got for the last couple of weeks.
We have a couple of questions for you, Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, uh, Chief, I appreciate you doing all that with the, uh, the road enforcement because I know there's a lot of problems, I s- I see the target zones you were after. Uh, just a curious question, but you said you're going to set them up again, I would be willing to bet you that after the second time, the third time, it wouldn't be as bad because they think they would learn their lesson, that, you know, be aware that they're, we're, we're, you're getting targeted, so, yeah.
I'll give you the dates when they come out, um, they're going countywide, this is the countywide regional traffic team I bring in, so they go countywide, they go to all the different districts.
Yep.
So I'll have a date, but they're going to come in July.
Okay.
So I'll give you guys a date when they're going to come.
So you have to put in a request?
Yeah.
For the traffic team from the county?
Yeah, it's a regional traffic team, so I reach out to the, the lieutenant in charge of the regional traffic team, and I tell them, hey, we're having complaints in our city, I want you to come in, and, and they come in.
Reschedule it.
That's, that's the great thing with BSO, you know, no one else has that, you know, we have 25 motor units that I can bring in on an operation like this, um, when I ask them for help, and snap of the finger, they pick a day and they come in.
Yeah, I know that coming out of that airport, uh, tunnel into, uh, up to Old Griffin Road, it's a, it's a, it's bad, there's some 60, 70 miles an hour coming through there.
I'll have them target that area to start with when they come in.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Thank you, Captain.
Anything else?
Looking forward to many more of these.
Yes.
Okay, in absence of Chief Pelisser?
Yes, Brad Masters, how are you?
We have-
Mr. Mayor?
Brad Masters.
I'm a district chief in Hallendale Beach.
District chief, okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, city mi- city manager. Um, I'm here covering for Sergio, Chief Pelisser, wonderful gentleman, as you all know, um, and I'm going to give you the report that he provided for me. Uh, talks about the training that we've done over the last month, uh, we've been training, not only running calls, but training, getting ready for when you call. Uh, they had USAR members at Station 1, USAR is Urban Search and Rescue, uh, national teams that go out and help during, uh, large-scale emergencies, they were working up the, uh, Station 1 members. Uh, they did a pit, post-incident analysis, review, post-incident analysis, what we do after a large-scale event, where we break down what we did great and what we could do better, trying to better serve the public. Uh, we have a new high-rise PAC rollout, uh, there's a whole new SOP or standard operating procedure that we have for high-rise operations, uh, the entire county is signed off on this so that every, no matter where it happens, no matter who responds to back us up, everybody's on the same page with our procedures. Uh, that's a very good deal. Uh, we had a extensive community outreach here in Dania, um, the Safe, uh, Safe Fun in the Sun program was done by our, our life safety educators, uh, that was at Frost Park, I'm sure you all know about that. Major focus of the event was on the, was the protection of our youth and their families, particularly during summer months. During the event, uh, elementary, middle, and high school campers participated in educational and interactive activities to learn about fire safety, water safety, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, health, and wellness. BSO fire cadets also designed obstacles courses for the campers as part of the Safe Fun in the Sun, uh, part of the obstacle courses, participants had the opportunity to dress like a firefighter, roll hose, pull hose, and take part in a water brigade. Uh, there were over 90 campers at the, uh, camp this summer, and we look forward to having the event next summer. Uh, our life safety team has three members, and these young ladies work their tails off, taking care not only Dania, but they take care of, uh, my people down in Hallendale Beach as well, so, uh, I think the whole county is blessed to have these people working for us. Continuing on Pelisser's report, uh, TRT had a drill at Millions of Parts on Old Griffin Road. Uh, they partnered with Berry University, the, uh, fire recruits from Berry University. The fire department participated in Hello Summer Event at PJ Melly Park. Units participated in the Juneteenth event, uh, we had a big Juneteenth event, I hope that was a good event for you all, I know it was wonderful down for us, too. And there were four car seat installations, I'm sorry to keep referring to Hallendale, but that's what I know, and trying to, okay. We had four car seat, uh, installation events here in Dania over the last month, uh, we are rescheduling the fire, fire truck push-in, which was canceled due to weather, and they're looking forward to the Second Annual September 11th, uh, commendation, commemoration. I also left, uh, some data for you all to see, uh, on your, in front of your name, uh, if you have any questions on anything that I've talked about, I would be glad to answer what I can, and send you something when, uh, Chief Pelisser responds to my questions.
So this is a call sheet?
This is, uh, a breakdown of the raw data, yes, these are the calls that were run for the, I believe this is the fiscal year 2122, so it was October 21 through September of '22.
Yep. Emergency medical service incidents are through the roof compared to anything else.
About 85, 87% of the calls we run.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, Commissioner James?
How are we to know the districts from this?
How are you compared to other districts? I'm sorry.
No, how are we to know our, our districts, or where these calls are kind of coming from in our city from this?
So I also provided, and I don't have that with me, I just got that this afternoon, uh, to Mr. Siegel, Adam Siegel, um, had requested some, uh, the bulk breakdown of all the calls, so that probably does have the individual, uh, zones that the calls were in, I'm sorry, I don't have that right now.
We can, excuse me, through to the mayor, we can send that to you.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what I'm looking at.
Okay, I apologize for that.
No, it's okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chief Masters. Onto the consent agenda, does anybody have any items they wish to pull from the consent agenda? Nope, okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
Thank you, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner James, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, unanimously. Okay, I'm to item 8.1, bids and requests for proposals, Eve, if you would.
Absolutely, a resolution of the city commission authorizing, uh, the city commission to rank the four firms that responded to the city's request for qualifications 23-005, Design Services for Mulligan Park Improvement, for design services related to construction at Mulligan Park, and to authorize contract negotiations with the top-ranked consultant, provided for conflicts and an effective date, Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec, would you like to speak on this?
Good evening, everybody, Eric Brown, Parks and Rec Director. Yes, this is an item, um, as we said, as we stated, uh, two times yesterday, to stay in line with our, our citywide strategic plan, and this is a FERTAP awarded, uh, project that we'll, we will be starting at Mulligan Park, and we have ranked the firms, and we just need your approval so that we can go out and get the design done so this park can get started this year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Any discussion on this item? All right, entertaining motion from Commissioner James. I have a second, Vice Mayor Llewellyn.
I like that system.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Okay, Friday, my 8.2, Eve, please.
A resolution of the city commission authorizing the award of the city invitation to bid 23-004 Community Shuttle Transportation Services to Limousines of South Florida Inc., uh, doing business as LSF Shuttle, providing for conflicts and effective date, public services.
Good evening, Fernando Rodriguez, Public Services. Uh, this is an item that was, uh, evaluated by the selection committee, I was put out to bid in, uh, in May, and this is for the, uh, long-standing shuttle service which covers the east and the west sides of the city with a fixed route circulator, and, uh, the three bidders were evaluated, and LSF was the most responsive and lowest bidder for the service at $68 an hour.
Commissioner James?
Yes, um, so this is the community shuttle?
Yes.
Is there anything that's different this time around than the last time?
Well, yes, there is, because the routes have been evaluated by our consultant, and they're going to be improved so that they are more efficient, and as well as we're going to put GPS on the buses, so you can have an app on the phone, there's going to be, uh, surveillance cameras in, uh, inside the bus and also outside, so we can see what happens as the driver drives even on the exterior, there's going to be automatic passenger counters, so things will be different, not so much by virtue of the bid, but because of the study that we conducted with the Coradino Group.
Okay, and I have a question for the city manager, I know that before, I'm not sure if you were here or not, that, uh, we almost lost funding because we didn't have enough ridership, um, we almost lost funding from the county, I believe, so I wanted to know what we're doing in our efforts to try and, um, market it and, and get more ridership, um, on our, on our buses.
Well, a big part of the ridership, uh, the ridership has gone up, in fact, it really has climbed to, to better levels than before COVID, during COVID, all ridership all over the counties.
Well, anything would rise above one person being on a bus, so I don't know what-
Yeah, no, it's a lot better than before COVID, so, uh, what we're trying to do to market it is a number of things, and I, I know you asked the manager, but I wanted to jump in because I've been working with C, with the Coradino Group. Uh, the graphics on the exterior of the bus, we're working on that, we're having some, um, some delays with the county, but we're working on the exterior graphic, we're going to improve the bus stop signage on the bus so people can really see Sardini Beach logo, and that's a bus stop for the circulator. We're also improving the interior by having the surveillance camera, people feel more secure, and the route is going to be more, more efficient, stop at better locations, so we're going to have ridership improvement just because the route's going to be a better route on east and the west. So there's a number of things that we're doing to improve ridership. The marketing part, I can't talk too much about that because more of the visual, which is the bus, we're doing more, yeah, I, I don't know about the marketing part in terms of-
I think I saw something one time, and it just put a little sticker or something on the bus, is it Wi-Fi?
So Commissioner, um, this, this whole started because of what we ourselves were seeing, jumping into the bus, seeing the bus being empty, the, the lack of safety, the bus wasn't attractive, bottom line, we brought in the Coradino Group.
Mm-hmm.
And, and thanks to your support, and, and that's the expertise, that's the report that we got, not only is the buses better, more reliable, uh, safer, more attractive, but remember, that this September, we're going to be putting out the Pioneer, it's in my manager's report, it's our city's first-ever citywide newsletter. Um, and we're going to be promoting everything that we're doing in parks, everything that we're doing in storm drainage, and this is also going to be front and center as one of the stories, to let everybody know, this is here, um, it's, it's reliable, it's safe, come and check it out, use it. Um, so in addition to social media, for every one of our residents to get this news, newsletter, this newspaper at their home, it's going to really highlight some of the many, many initiatives that you all have approved and we're working with the different departments.
Okay, and lastly, is there Wi-Fi on the bus?
Uh, not at this time, that's another, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's another one of the improvements, Wi-Fi, we eventually want to light, I like to see a flat screen on, inside the bus so people can see a co- upcoming event for the city.
Uh-huh.
Like we've done in other cities where I was before, we had a flat screen so people could sit there and actually see what's coming up, Dania After Dark, those kind of things, Wi-Fi's a great idea, we also, even little baby steps, like the spare buses, I've noticed, as I forgot here, that they don't really have, when they put a spare, because the first frontline bus is out of service, there's no indication on the exterior that it's Sardini Beach, so we're getting magnetic signs to put on those spare buses when they do run, so people know it's Dania Beach, so little things like that make a difference.
Okay, awesome, well-
And before we had an east and west route, now is it more of a circular route? That's what you said?
It's going to be, it's, this is going to be, they're going to be overlapping in a much better way.
They overlap, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Fran.
Well, with that, I, I'll make a motion for item 8.2.
All right. I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None opposed.
I like it.
Passes. Okay, now on to public hearings, Eve, can you read item 9.1, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution of the city commission approving the request for a rave, a waiver of the 1,000-foot distance separation requirement pertaining to the sale of alcoholic beverages submitted by the applicant Yvonne Semikin, Dania Beach Distillery LLC, for the property located at 110 Northwest First Street, in its 17 and 18 within the city of Dania Beach, provided for conflicts of variability and an effective date. I need to swear in anyone who's going to be testifying on this item, uh, including staff, so raise your right hand. Gentlemen, I believe, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You two? Thank you.
Good evening.
Go ahead, Corinne.
Um, Corinne LaJoy in Community Development, and we're actually asking that this item be continued to the July 11th meeting at the time that we were preparing this item, they hadn't yet, um, conducted their community outreach, so we wanted to make sure that we had the results of that before, um, bringing it forward to the commission.
Okay.
And to what date, to the July 11th?
Okay, Commissioner James?
Motion to continue to July 11.
Motion to continue to July 11, July 11th by Commissioner James, Vice Mayor Llewellyn, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item passes for continuation. All right, on to item, what are we at, 9.2?
An ordinance of the city commission approving the right-of-way vacation request submitted by the city of Dania Beach for the property portion of Southwest Second Terrace of South, Southwest Second Place, generally located north and south of Mulligan Park at two-three-zero Southwest First Court, and it, um, provided for conflicts of variability and effective date, this is second reading, Community Development.
Yes, good evening, this is second reading of the vacation of right-of-way on the north and south side of Mulligan Park. I have the same presentation I can make again, I can tell you that we've, um, done community outreach, the item went to planning and zoning before it came to commission for first reading, we're now at second reading, so we've had a lot of public hearing, um, meetings on the item, and we've had no public opposition to this request.
This is a public hearings, anybody wish to speak on this item? Commissioners, any discussion?
No.
Okay, Commissioner James?
Motion.
I have a motion, second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, nine point three.
An ordinance of the city commission amending chapter two, twelve point five, fortune tellers, palmists, clairvoyants, and astrologers by amending section tw- twelve point five point two, dash two, excuse me, issuance and revocation of business tax receipt, and section twelve point five dash three judicial remedy by circuit court, and amending chapter twenty-one sales and auctions at article fi- at article four, auctions and auctioneers, at section twelve dash fifty-two, excuse me, twenty-one fifty-two, issuance and revocation of license to require all the following uses, fortune tellers, palmists, clairvoyants, astrologers, auctioneers, to adhere to special business tax receipt requirements, which requirements are amended to provide administrative review by staff and a de novo appeal to the city commission after public hearing and appeal to court of the city commission decision. Uh, sales and auctions provided for codification, conflicts of variability and effective date, second reading, and it is a city attorney item. I did give a presentation previously, would you like one again?
No, we're okay.
Okay.
This is a public hearings, does anybody wish to speak on this item? No, okay, Commissioner Davis?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Oh.
Okay, you can do the second. Give it to Marco. Commissioner Salvino gets to be second.
Okay, Laura, you got that, all right. Okay, moving right along to discussion of possible action, this is item ten point one.
A resolution of the city commission pursuant to section eight eleven dash one forty of the LDC, the applicant Laura Gasper requests approval of the mural located at two-fifty South Federal Highway, Dania Beach, Florida, provided for conflicts of, of variability and effective date, this is a community development item.
Good evening, um, I do have a presentation on this, this is for a mural approval at, um, two-fifty, I think, South Federal Highway, it is for the Gasper Arts. On June twelfth, the mural was presented to the Public Art Advisory Board, and they made a recommendation to the city commission for approval of the mural. The mural theme for the property is pattern after the, um, artist imagined representative wavelength signifying creative movements, um, the pattern invokes the landscaping, there's actually kind of two murals, one on the, um, south, uh, building elevation, one on the east, um, they are a little bit different, the one on the east has floral, as you can see, um, this is the east facing, this is what faces Federal Highway, and then on the south, um, side of the building is this kind of landscape mural. Like I said, Public Art Advisory Board heard the item, June, um, twelfth, and Community Development is recommending approval to the commission of the public art of the mural, and we're available if you have any questions.
Okay, question, Commissioner James?
Can you go back to the graphics?
Yes. My friend puts it back up.
Some of it looks unfinished, I don't know if it's just my eye or that, what? It, it still look like they didn't finish coloring, I, I don't know, what is it, what is it, um?
That's like a lake, what they're, what they didn't color, it looks like, right? Yeah, okay.
Can you go back one, okay, so you have that on the front and then the other one on the back?
And this is on the south, on the street frontage, yes.
The desert in Dania, it felt like a desert today, that's for sure, but, okay, and the art board liked it?
Yeah, it was approved.
We, we had some of that same discussion as well, but it came back that that's how they wanted to keep it for now, and so that's pretty much what the, how, how they're leaving it for now. But we did, we give it, bring that up.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Davis, sorry. Commissioner Davis, can you say one more time what the art board said, I apologize, you weren't, your mic wasn't on.
Uh, no worries, uh, with, that, that was one of the comments that the art board brought up, and, and, because we love, it, we love the, um, the front of the building or the east side of the building, and, uh, that was part of the discussion is that it looked like it wasn't quite complete, but, uh, when they came back, they said that that was the final, and it was supposed to have like those waves of, whatever that term was, but it, it, it's like a desert, and so that was their interpretation, and, you know, that, so that, that's how it came back, and they're not looking to do anything else to it at this time, so, um, we just went ahead and allowed them to keep it as it is, so if you guys want to give them some recommendations, I'm sure they might be willing.
I think all the discussion that we've been having on it already provokes it, that it's art, you know, so.
It's up to the artist's interpretation.
Yes.
Okay, so it goes, so it just goes to the art board, and, and you all don't, like, what?
Well, that's why it's here to you now, it goes to the art board first, we discuss it, and then we recommend whether or not, you know, we would recommend to approve it.
They painted this without approval, and then they came for an application after.
Also, this was another one that just put it up there before, okay, I, I want them to add something to it, I'm sorry, I, I'm.
So typically, we don't dictate the art, the artist provides the art to us, and we approve or deny the art. It's not really our place to say we want, you know, a camel here, like she said, or, you know, whatever.
Oh, I thought it came to us for discuss, oh, just discussion to approve or deny it?
To make sure you meet the criteria of public art.
So that fit the criteria?
Yes, it does.
We need to, we need to fix this criteria, I, I mean, I, I know it's open to interpretation, I'm not an artist, I don't draw, but it just, it looks a little incomplete to me, and that's just my comment.
And this was a retro, right, I mean, this was already done, and it came to us after the fact, so it wasn't like that, we think, this is a concept that was approved, and then we said, yes, this was already done, so it came to us after the fact, so then we didn't really feel like we had the place to go back and tell them, we didn't want to deny it since it was already there, but going forward.
This is behind their building, this doesn't, this is like their parking lot, it doesn't front US one.
Right, right, if it fronted US one, it would be a different story.
Commissioner Salvino?
I'm unhappy with it. Uh, I have to be honest with you, um, you know, the front of it's not so bad, you know, it, it looks, it has some character to it, but, um, you know, if I had my, my way about, it looks like, it looks like it's what's left over from the flood, and, um, you know, different heights and different colors, I think that they need to add more to it, I, I'm not happy with it. I, I find it's up to me for approval on that, I'm not asking them to take it down, but I think they need to come back with a concept that makes it look a little bit more appropriate for that street, I think there's a lot of wall there that has to be done, and I think it's, it's incomplete, and that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Um, this is now the second, I remember, I said it's the last time, there's going to be more of these that show up, people do them, and then they come here looking for approval.
This is the last, there was three that we caught.
Okay, it's the last one?
Yeah.
Uh, so I was going to ask you, are there any more?
There is not right now.
Three times a charm?
I can't prevent people from doing bad things, but I will do my best.
That's, yeah, they, they start doing it again, it's because, it's going to get denied, I mean, I just, it's just getting, it's getting old, people doing this without any approval, and then just coming to us.
If it's the consensus of the commission to bring it back to the art board and have a discussion with the, um, property owner?
Let's, let's call it to a vote.
Call it.
And if it doesn't pass, go ahead, Commissioner Salvino.
You know, um, I, I don't like, we've been very liberal on letting the other two go, and I don't want to start, you know, a bad trend here, I think if they, I don't want them to take it off, but I really think that they should come back with another, uh, rendering of something that can be added to it somewhere along the line, or best, if they don't want to spend the money, paint it all one color and leave it plain, because I, I don't like it, I think it's, I think it looks dirty.
You're on still, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I like the front, I like the front of the building, that's not so much. Yeah, the front looks fine.
Yeah.
Oh, I do?
I just think that, uh, I, I think that they should either break back in a mask, and, okay, then I'll just quit talking, since I didn't have the phone, right?
Thank you, Commissioner James?
You, you say you have a motion? Okay, I, I make a motion to deny this, um, not the front, but the side, I don't even know if that's.
So to approve the front and to deny the back?
That's correct.
I have a second from Commissioner Davis.
Call a roll.
All in favor?
Call a roll.
Yeah. Laura, can I please call a roll?
Commissioner Davis?
Sorry, hold on, one second, go ahead.
Commissioner Davis?
No, just the, just the side.
Wait, let's clarify what we're voting on here, we're voting on to, uh, approve the front, which faces US one, and deny the rear of the building.
Yes, and for clarification, denying the side doesn't mean that they have to take it off, they can come back with something different and paint over it, or add something to it, correct?
We will go back to the art board, have them.
Okay, to amend, to amend the side, how about that?
So it would be to deny it currently as, as presented, and to send it back to the art board for further review?
For the side.
For the back, yes.
They tried, okay.
And if they decide to just paint it plain, and it doesn't come back to you?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now you call it to a, a vote, Laura.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right, wonderful, now we can move on to Commissioner comments, and we will start with Commissioner Joyce Davis, Joyce L. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, um, we had, uh, I had a lot of things going on, we had a lot of things going on, uh, this past couple of weeks, I think I will start with what I see in front of me, which is the Juneteenth celebration, um, I was able to go, and I can tell you, it was a night and day difference from the first year to the second year, and I think that had a lot to do with the Parks and Recreation being a part of it, um, there was a great, great turnout, the tent being there made all the difference in the world, it was, it, it saved people from the heat, I, I did get there when it was pouring rain, and unfortunately, the rain came out and kind of, um, had everybody huddled under the tents and things like that, but I was really happy to see the turnout, I was happy to see the Historical Society and the Panthers, and a lot of people who came out participated, so that the event has definitely elevated, um, from what it began, and so I was really, really excited to see that, hopefully, uh, there will be, um, good weather next year, and, um, let's see, what else do we have here? The, I, I also went to the, um, Broward League of Cities Board of Directors, and we, when we had our director installation, I want to thank my colleagues for nominating me to be a director once again, um, the, the league, it was also really nice, and I think we need to think more often to how we can have, uh, things that we do as a team, we had all, a lot of our directors present, our city manager, um, our colleagues from CRA, so it was good, we had, we had a couple tables there, and, um, it was a great celebration, and so I want to thank everybody for coming together and, uh, doing a great job of, and supporting the Broward League. Um, also, I had the wonderful opportunity to be the keynote speaker for the Dan Marino graduation, uh, foundation graduation, um, and I, I just really want to say it was a heartfelt event, and really seeing kids, or really, they were, um, adults, young adults, eighteen to thirty years old with autism, um, special needs, and, um, they're able to do so many things in their own unique and special way, so I just think it's really important that we be able to embrace, um, the Dan Marino Foundation, be able to educate our businesses uh, on how to help and accept, um, people with autism and other disabilities, because, uh, they do deserve a, a quality of life, and, and we have the opportunity to present them with some opportunities here, so, uh, we are going to continue those conversations for partnership, and I want to thank you for your support on that. Our parks, our parks are so pretty, thank you so much, I love my city pretty, um, I, I just, I just, I just love it, you guys are just knocking it out of the park with our parks, our passive parks, it was really nice to have the Jones Park with, uh, Albert and Milton and the Jones family participating, it was just wonderful, uh, to see that, and of course, I love Tootie Adler Park and the beach, every, the beach is pristine, the parks are pristine, you guys are rocking and rolling in Parks and Rec, and thank you all, everybody, Public Services, who I know keeps those parks clean, because I see them cleaning each and every day, so thank you guys for what you do each and every day, uh, to, to make our city absolutely beautiful. And to go on the theme of beautiful, yes, I'm talking, but I love the, uh, flags, I love the flags all over the city for, um, for the Fourth of July, I love the banners, the banners look good all over the place, we've got a great spirit of, you know, camaraderie and USA and patriotism going on in the city, and it just looks really, really, really good, um, as you're going through all of our corridors, so I want to thank the city manager, your team, and everybody who puts those, and their quality flags, they, when they blow, they blow in the wind, and they, they don't look cheap, so thank you for that, it really, they really look good, and I appreciate the quality that goes behind that. Um, what's not quality, however, is our business cards, so, I'm just bringing that up right now, because we're stepping everything up, and, you know, I know the mayor, and, and the manager and I went to Tallahassee when I went to the Broward League of Cities, um, when people give you their cards, there's so many upgraded cards, we're upgrading everything that we do, so I just want to consider that we have the, you know, the ability just to upgrade how we present ourselves when we go to different places, so I, I want to seek consensus from you guys for being able to upgrade our, our business cards, because.
We have consensus.
Thank you, the, the Vista print look is not getting it, so, thank you.
Just show us a couple designs, and we can pick one, and, you know, we don't need like one congruent design, everybody can have like a little tweak, but I, I, it definitely could be improved.
As a matter of fact, I was working, I was discussing that with, with Nanette today, and, and, and Cassie, and our new special events manager, based on the conversations that we've had with you, so we're going to bring you a couple samples, and move forward with that.
Yeah, social media, QR, all these, there's so many different things that we can do to upgrade, and since we're on this trajectory, I, I'd just like to continue that, so thank you guys for your support on that, um, I also played a little game with myself or with the Sea View, I pretended to be a secret shopper, and I went into the Sea View, um, residences, because they're now leasing, and I just, I came off the beach, I wasn't dressed like Commissioner Davis, I was in my beach gear, and I just went in there, and I wanted to see how they were going to treat me when I walked in with, with my, uh, with my exercise gear in from the beach, and I can say they, they did a truly outstanding job, uh, the regular staff wasn't there, the managers came out and met me, showed me all around as if, you know, he really wanted to, uh, give the best of the best service, it is a stunning place, and I look forward to everybody celebrating the ribbon cutting on the twenty-ninth of August, and... The Sea View, I mean, the Celeste was also another wonderful, um, ribbon cutting for us, I know we all got to go out there, um, the, from the outside to the inside, uh, I, I never thought I'd want a studio, live in a studio, but now I'm considering a studio, it's really, really beautiful what they're able to do, um, with these upgraded places, and people are wanting to come to Dania Beach, people are coming in droves, so I think that is all on my list, which was a lot, but, um, Mayor Salvino, oh, I mean, Commissioner Salvino, I'm going to let you, um, hear the end of my talk now, I want to thank everybody for coming out, and have a great, great evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis, very thorough report. Commissioner James?
Um, yes, I, I just wanted to say again how excited I am about the continuing, um, upgrades to our parks. I did enjoy that yesterday, and I, and I know that we have some work coming up, um, and so I look forward to continue to celebrate momentous occasions, and, um, I wanted to know if we can start thinking about some type of a Fourth of July showcase, we never do anything for the Fourth as a city, I would love to see, uh, how, how much it would cost to maybe do something off of our beaches, I know other cities do it. I have not seen, I, I know that they mentioned one time doing one off the garage, I'm sure that is absolutely not going to happen with all the fireworks falling off everyone's properties and cars, uh, off of the top of the garage, but I do want to see what that would look like if we could possibly have some type of a celebration for the Fourth of July, or some type of a firework display, um, in that manner, since the Fourth of July is coming up, and, and I, I do, uh, like to look at a lot of the pretty fireworks displays, and so outside of that, have a happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you, Commissioner James, Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll keep it on.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it under fifteen minutes. Just to reiterate on a couple of things that Commissioner Davis said and Commissioner James. The parks, that very, very proud of what our city's accomplished with these parks that we're redoing. They really look good. And tomorrow night, if anybody's interested around and listening, we'll be doing the Melaluka Park with another ribbon cutting, which will be the last of our parks for a while. The beach, yesterday we were at the beach and the park, kids came running up from some of our daycare's and off the beach itself and they had the snow cones and stuff. It was really, it's really neat to see a brand-new park getting so much attention right away. So, you know, just to pass that to the residents, I'm glad that they're there. I'm sure everybody will enjoy them. And also the, well, I'll pass on it. I'm done. Thank you very much. I didn't want to get into it.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Yes, thank you. I've got a few, but I'll try to keep it brief as well because I know I'm getting stared down over here. Anyway, go with the theme of the parks. I was really happy to see the Jones family able to come and celebrate their mother. Because the park that's named after her, the Mildred Jones Park, and the new equipment that's there. So we're also encouraging people to be healthy and work out and do things in the fresh air, which is really good. And the park on the beach was awesome. I've been watching it and it's just, it's absolutely amazing. It's such, it's day to night. It's a whole different vibe down there now. And we actually took a cute picture with Commissioner Davis, myself, and Director Norena with our snow cones. And we had red, white, and blue snow cones. So we thought it was really patriotic. It was very cute. Anyway, so that was nice. I was also at the Broward League of Cities event, which did feel like a bit of a team-building event. And it was really good. It was nice to see everybody in a different element and having a really good time and actually getting to meet some of the people that we talk to all the time at these events because it actually puts people together face-to-face so they can talk about some other issues and maybe get in contact later on about things that they need. So that was, that was fun. I also, well, I was at the Celeste ribbon cutting, which was very nice. And they, it is a really, it is a stunning place. I also took a tour of the Seaview. I made an appointment, though. And it's, that's an amazing place as well. I can't wait for everybody to see it and go to the ribbon cutting, hopefully. Last thing that I think I'm going to talk about is one of our lovely residents who's here tonight. Happy birthday, Les. It's Leslie's birthday. It was his birthday last week, right? And he had a big birthday. And he does not look his age at all. I'm just shocked. So happy birthday, Leslie, and thank you for being here tonight. And have a happy and safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, for my report, I know that we only have one more meeting, then we have a six-week recess for summer. So just want to reminder, you know, hopefully we could button up everything that we've been working on and, you know, I guess brainstorm the ideas that we have as well. It's not like the city's shutting down, but we're just not going to be able to conduct business for the next six weeks. So just a reminder that at the next meeting, you know, let's try and get everything we could get out before. Exactly, yeah. Let's get everything business-wise done that we need to get done before we move on to the summer break. So we don't have, we're not behind when we get back as a commission. And yes, the parks were wonderful. It's great to honor wonderful Danians like, you know, Mildred Jones and our former mayor, Al Jones, and his brother, Milton Jones. And, you know, the Jones family has contributed to Dania exponentially. And it's great to honor them and have them out to see that the city wants to recognize that family. And Frank C. Tudy Adler, I mentioned some words yesterday on what he did and accomplished for the city. And it's amazing what that gentleman did for our city. He, I'll say it again, I know not everybody was there. He was the youngest commissioner for Dania at age twenty-six. He got his law degree while he was a commissioner. He was a county commissioner. He was the mayor of Dania. He was the city attorney for Dania. He was instrumental in establishing the Alligator Alley. And he worked out a deal with Collier County and Broward County for a toll road. And he also was instrumental in the beach. He purchased twenty-eight acres of land from the state of Florida for two hundred eighty dollars, ten dollars an acre. And everybody was amazed that he was able to work that deal out. So it was nice to honor him and his family as well. And when I move on to, for a contingency request, okay? This is for, this is for Project Home Ministries, all right? And this is through the Greater Mount Zion Church, which is the oldest church in Dania. No, the second oldest church in Dania. Second oldest church in Dania. And what Homes does, it's run by Pastor Wiggins. And they provide feeding and education incentives for disadvantaged children. They engage in activities for purposes of positively impacting employment opportunities within the city of Dania Beach and the surrounding communities. They provide community-based social services. They engage in economic development initiatives. They provide financial literacy workshops to the community that we serve, so they help adults as well. And, you know, they envision servicing these individuals during a three-module session. And I would like to support this program to Pastor Wiggins. I'd just like to give them five hundred dollars out of my contingency fund if this is approved. All right, thank you very much. And that's all I have to say. So now we will move on to administrative reports. Well, we have no appointments. Move on to administrative reports with our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go off order here because I see Fernando and Dinsler. And today I had a meeting with Ashley Vlasic, our new special events manager. And I was with Nanette as well. And I asked her to tell me what's her impression of the city. She, you know, we were able to recruit her from Deerfield Beach. And I know that Eric and Cassie did a really great job. And she's hit the round running as Nanette. And she said that she has never, she's worked in several cities and in the private sector, that she has never worked in a city with such a culture. And how quickly things get done here. And she says, and coming from Parks and Recreation, being able to get so much support from public services and from Fernando and Dinsler and Corey and the rest of the team, and that is priceless. When I hear this from somebody new telling me kudos from one department to another department. And as you will see, as we put shovels on the ground in parks and cut ribbons in parks. And tomorrow, when we will be at Melaluka at 5:00 PM to cut that ribbon. And on Thursday, when we go to unveil the Totor sculpture. These relationships and the culture here in this city, I see our HR director and Maxine and everybody that's here. It's seamless from one department to another. When we need to make something happen, everybody comes together for you all and for our residents. And that was music to our ears. And as a public servant, really, that's what fuels us. And I just wanted to say that and I'm very, very grateful for that. This was also mentioned to me from the people at Celeste last week. What a pleasure it is to work with our building department, with community development, with Eleanor, with Corinne, with everybody, with Tammy, everybody that they mentioned. And it's very, very important. And that's the culture that we're going to continue to keep here in this city. I wanted to bring Candido real quick up to the podium because I had been speaking with Commissioner Salvino to do a project with Memorial. And it's coming to fruition and it's going to be a great, great project. And I want Candido just to bring us up to speed real quick about that project that's coming forward August nineteenth.
Thank you, manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. Like the manager mentioned, Memorial Regional reached out to us through Commissioner Salvino. Commissioner Salvino scheduled a meeting so we could meet the executives of Memorial Regional. He was their president as well. And the outcome was very exciting and very positive for our city. Memorial Regional wants to be a partner with the city. They want to be able to provide free medical services through two buses. One of them will be dedicated for adults, the second one for children. You don't need insurance. They don't check even if you are a citizen or anything. If you need health service, you come to the bus and they will provide it to you, as well as mental health services. And they will also refer for other services. We've selected an area right next to CW Thomas Park, which is the parking lot next to the substation. That will be dedicated for them. They're going to start with three days a week for approximately a month to two months. Then they're going to go to one day a week for two years. And they'll be able to provide these services for everyone in the community. And they specifically wanted it to be that community because they did the research and they realized that that community could benefit greatly through these free medical services. They want, we picked the date, August nineteenth, from ten AM to two PM. It's going to be the grand kickoff, letting everyone know about these medical services. The kickoff will be Saturday, August nineteenth, from ten AM to two PM at CW Thomas Park. There are going to be a DJ with music, bounce houses for the kids, water slides, ice cream, food giveaway raffles. There's going to be community partner tables. There's going to be a health fair, screenings, lecturers, doctors will be there. And that will be the grand kickoff to this partnership between Memorial Regional and the city of Dania Beach. I want to say thank you, Commissioner Salvino, for communicating with the Vice President of Memorial Regional to be able to bring this service. There's only a few cities that they selected. They did their homework and they saw the type of city that we are. And they came to us wanting to partner with us and be able to provide these medical services. Again, there'll be two buses, one for the children, one for adults, and it's all free for our community. Thank you, manager. Are there any questions?
Yes, I think that is phenomenal. I know that we, do we still have those other Memorial buses that don't offer what you're saying? Because I know that they used to go to the different areas. I think they used to maybe go to Frost Park. I know they used to go to CW, but then they just got stationed here. And at the time, I was saying that, that it needs to be in the community because of diabetes, because of hyperventure, because of the data that you're stating. And so are we allowed, once, especially they were there during the seniors' meetings because they are older, you know, and they did utilize that bus a lot when it went to CW Thomas Park. But it's no longer going there. I think that it's only stationed here. Is it also a way that that bus can just rotate? And not necessarily that it just stays at CW Thomas Park, but not the bus that you're talking about, the other bus that was going to the parks. Could that bus rotate? Because I think that not everyone comes to City Hall. You know, Out West is really far from City Hall. I don't think that people are going to utilize it if they're from Out West and even from Frost Park and CW. Is that a way to get that bus into rotation?
The bus does come to City Hall. And actually, I believe, Linda, they're going to be here for the Job Fair as well, the Memorial Bus at City Hall. We mentioned about rotating. They weren't, they wanted to have an established location where everyone knows where they're at for two years. What I was going to talk with Fernando was to see if we could have the shuttle be able to move from different buses to the location at CW. And we're going to market it citywide, but the location is still going to be.
Not that bus, not the buses that you're talking about that's going to offer the services.
They're going to discontinue the one here because I think it was done every quarter or every month. It wasn't as frequent. At CW, it's going to be every week, the same day, at the same location.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so you're not going to do the others. I was just asking.
Once we start with this one, this one will discontinue.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So we're really excited about that and about that partnership. I also met with Commissioner Davis and Coca-Cola, then I met with Linda, then I met with our new chief and a couple of the sergeants for BSO and our memorial team. And before we knew it, we said, hey, look, there's all these entities, Dania Beach, our city, BSO, Coca-Cola, Memorial. There are so many openings and so many jobs that are available. And the criteria has changed because it's an employee market. And all these amazing organizations stationed here in our city or in Broward County because Coca-Cola is just south of us in Hollywood. This career fair is going to be fantastic. All the key HR people are going to be here in our city, July fifteenth, from nine AM to twelve noon. So anybody that needs a job, whatever age, and don't think that you know the criteria to join BSO or to be a driver for Coca-Cola or to work at Memorial. You don't necessarily need experience in having worked in a hospital. But it's going to be a fantastic health fair. We're all going to be here and we're going to promote it. But you all are our greatest promoter. We're going to continue to share it on social media. I'm even thinking of using that code RED that we have because it's extremely important that the word gets out to the community about this fantastic health fair. Also, very excited to let you know that at the end of this month, I'm sorry, at the end of next month in August, I'm already thinking we're in July, we're going to start the Phase One construction of the Southeast Drainage Project. It's the largest drainage project in the history of our city. We've worked very hard to get the necessary funding from Tallahassee to the feds, to the Surtex. So that's another historical project that's going to be.
You said July?
No, August.
August, okay.
So that's Phase One construction. And we expect the construction of Phase One to start in the summer. And at the end of the summer, and it would take approximately fifteen months. But we were not going to disable our storm drains that we currently have. We're going to augment what we have. So we're very excited about that. We expect also the Nyberg Swanson, because I know that Joanna's there, happy birthday, Joanna, and thank you for all you do. The Nyberg Swanson Restoration Project will be completed in approximately fifteen months. We look forward to approximately August of next year, aligned with my one-hundred-and-twentieth birthday to cut the ribbon on that project. And while we have one point five million dollars funding from ARPA and another four hundred and twenty from city funds, we anticipate that the total project cost will exceed two million. And we have added more monies to the twenty twenty-four fiscal budget for the Nyberg Swanson. So we're very excited about that. The Job Fair, we invite everybody to join us at Dania Point this Thursday as we unveil Totor, a gift from Nice, France. Again, relationships and just a tremendous project that the whole team is really involved in. We have a committee working with Dania Point. I know the mayor had the opportunity to meet the artists. And this is what we're looking to do, folks. I mean, Dania Beach is a hidden gem. We look forward to partnering. I've discussed with Maxine the opportunity to be able to move forward with sister cities. Sisters in the Caribbean, in Europe, and the mayor and I discuss even somebody, you know, locally here in Florida or in the United States. So a lot of cool things. The mayor and I, Candido, Fernando, and Nanette will all be in the city of Miami Beach tomorrow to thank the city manager and that team that came and helped us in that unprecedented one-in-one-thousand-year storm. You know, gratitude to those that help us in continuing on those relationships that you all wanted to make sure that I establish new relationships and that I continue to enhance the existing relationships that I had from Miami-Dade County. Seaview One will be having the grand opening and ribbon cutting on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth of August. Again, Seaview, like Celeste, will be discounting studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms for any and all first responders. I'm going to talk to them also to see if we can include teachers, city employees. But the folks from Celeste, the folks from Seaview, they've just been amazing. And when you walk into these places, you feel like you're in a resort. And just the level of service is really amazing. And to preserve the old and the historic in our city and to embrace the new really makes us a very, very unique, unique place. This Thursday, or the twenty-ninth, I have Seaview. What can I say? I couldn't be more honored to serve you as your city manager. We have a great team. Take a look at these reports. Just the new report from Chief Tarala. Chief Tarala! Chief Tarala! Your report. Fantastic report. Thank you. And just the rest of the department, the energy here in the city is fantastic. And we're all working together in unison to move the city forward. And thank you again.
Thank you, Madam Manager. On to our city attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Very quickly, in the two litigation matters of the Citizens for Responsible Development versus the City of Dania. of the Citizens for Responsible Development versus the city of Dania Beach, including all the appeals as listed in this, in this briefing here, I'm looking just to confirm that I have the authorization to settle those cases, including all the appeals. And I'll, I'll bring forward the actual settlement agreement at a later date.
Do we have a consensus for an authorization?
Yes.
Thank you so much. One last thing is a discussion item. I got a request from one of the board members from this city's Charter Review Committee. And the idea is that she would like, well, let me back up for a minute. None of our boards have a city email address. They have a personal email address, whether it's a Hotmail, Gmail, whatever. And a board member from the Charter Review asked if she could put the city logo on her emails if she were to send an email out. And I don't have the authority to give that authorization. It is your, your authorization. So I'm just bringing it to your attention.
I'll, I'll just, I'll just discuss this right now. Hopefully this can solve the problem. I think they could just go through the city clerk if they want to send out an official email from their board. And then they, they get the logo and everything through the city clerk. And, and then that, that solves all the issues. So any, any department that, yeah, any board that wants to go through or wants a logo, they could go through you, Alora. Is that okay?
So to clarify, they would come to me to use the city logo?
Well, no, just, just to communicate to the board through you.
Okay, so they would send me something and I would send it on their behalf?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm not giving them the city logo to use.
That's kind of what, yes.
Yeah.
Isn't that kind of what's done already with boards as it is?
That's what I encourage, for them to direct all communications through me to avoid any sunshine law violations. But I don't think, I think her intent was just maybe not communicating with each other. But if she were to communicate as a board member to somebody else, she wanted, I guess, to have some type of representation that she was a board member or a part of the city in a way. I think that's what her intent was, but I don't-
Yeah, I think that's fine. Yeah, it works.
It seems like we have consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, wonderful. All right. City clerk, you're up.
Okay, so for the month of July, July eleventh, we have our CRA board meeting at four thirty. So that's being pushed up. Yes, ma'am. Because July, because we have the CRA budget workshop to begin at five. And then we'll have our regular meeting, which is the last meeting before your summer break at seven PM on July eleventh as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out, everybody. Meeting adjourned.